Good evening, I'm gonna call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, August 24th. And I'm gonna ask if Commissioner McCann will lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance this evening. And Madam Secretary, could you please call roll this evening?
Please let the record show that all Planning Commissioners are present, as well as Deputy City Attorney Jennifer Farrell on teleconference.
Alright, and if we can look at the meeting minutes from August 10th.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Second.
Alright, if you could please vote. Alright, those minutes passed, thank you. Alright, we're gonna move to the agenda for public hearing and, oh actually, we're gonna look for public comments. Do we have any requests for public comments that are not on tonight's agenda?
No, Chair Opel.
Great, thank you. Alright, so moving to consent calendar, we have no items on consent calendar. No items on a public hearing. Sorry, I'm on the wrong minutes there, so... So move on to old business, we have no old business. And new business is a preliminary review, PA 20-0025, for the demolition of an existing residence, lot merger, addition of between 10 and 14 feet of fill for the development of a triplex, a duplex and detached single-family residence on a lot located at 34456 Villa Gomez. And we have a staff report this evening.
Yes, we do. The preliminary review will be introduced by Senior Planner Sean Nicholas, and then we have a presentation from the applicant. Sean?
Yes, thank you, Planning Commission Sean Nicholas, project planner. This is the preliminary review for a potential project at 34456 Villa Gomez. This is to orient everyone, the site is in Cabo Beach, between Villa Sacramento and Villa California, and it actually is made up of two lots. So here's some just background information, as well as the review for this evening. The site has had a long history associated with drainage. It both has private encumbrance, as well as natural drainage that daylights then infiltrates back subterranean. The low point of the site is approximately 14 feet below the street level. As noted, they're proposing to remove the existing single-story, single-family residence and develop a triplex, which is consistent of a duplex and separate detached, single-family residence. This is again before the Planning Commission for a preliminary review only, and so Planning Commission is limited in terms of the feedback that they can provide, and I have some additional information to hopefully help in terms of guiding the Planning Commission in terms of their comments this evening. The main point, as noted, has to do with that 14 feet, and the applicant's proposal is to potentially come forward with a variance that would result in anywhere between 10 and 14 feet of fill. This is a component and a portion of the conceptual grading plan that was provided to the commission this evening, and this is the cross-section showing at the most extreme condition, that 14 feet of fill. Here you can see, A, the lot that has the A on it, or 31, that pad based on where it, the new proposed structure might be located, would require about 10 feet of fill in that back corner. And then the lower lot, Lot 30, that has the B on it, which will ultimately is the potential duplex, will result in that 14 feet of fill in that main lower area that is sunk down on the site. And you can see as it is, that's in that back corner, and Villa Gomez being towards the front there. So, staff has done a very preliminary review of the proposal, and at the very least, the staff has determined that it requires a variance in site development permit, and I just want to note, there was unfortunately an incorrect notation in the staff report that was provided regarding a residential subdivision that is not applicable, which you might remember from a recent additionally preliminary staff, preliminary review Planning Commission completed, but that would not apply here, as that this is not a new residential subdivision. So the variance request requirement needed to meet this, to meet this development as proposed, would be required. And again, that's, the request is to measure that building height from that 10 to 14 feet of fill. Height typically, as Planning Commission knows, is measured from the low point of either existing or proposed pad grade, and that's based on where, again, the structure is hitting. And that's why I wanted to highlight that the single-family residence, based on its location of the existing topography, and where they've placed that home would require that 10 foot of fill, and the duplex where it is proposed to be placed would require the 14 feet of fill. Again, based on this proposal, the site development permit for reference is required for the proposed triplex development. The project has not been reviewed in terms of compliance with all applicable development standards. That would be completed during any formal application. Our focus has really been regarding this primary variance issue. And again, the drainage, they have provided an initial concept regarding a vault concept, but that has not been fully vetted, and is not the only potential option to address drainage on that site. And so that full analysis will be completed also during a formal application, should the applicant move forward. So, in terms of applicant's review, the, the... In terms of the Planning Commission, there we go, preliminary review this evening, it's really centered along three, three main points, which is the general plan consistency, development standard consistency, which really have to do with those variance findings, and then land use compatibility and community values. With the overarching goal and objective of the discussion this evening is to provide the applicant general issues that, and items that they need to address as a component of their formal application. I'm gonna go over, I have the variance findings here on the next slide, but also I want to highlight Supporting Document 2 in your staff report. If you want to also start looking over those, I provided to you both the variance findings and the site development permit findings, should you want to perhaps more easily view them than on the next slide. But I want to put on for the record, and this is pursuant to the zoning code, is that tonight's discussion is not intended to provide feedback on a potential future decision, or in terms of any indication that the Planning Commission may or may not approve any future proposed development at this site. So again, just for the record, we want to make that clear. Again, here's the variance findings that I referenced as in your Supporting Document 2. I know it's a lot of verbiage here. It really has to do a lot of issues associated with hardships and special conditions that exist on the site. It's important to note that the project site could be developed without the variance, and they would still be able to get the same density. They would just be at a lower level. And also, potentially, the hillside ordinance might also be applicable, and those provisions have also been provided to you this evening in your attachments. But again, the applicant has not fully vetted out those options, again, opting for this variance discussion this evening. With that, that concludes staff's presentation. The applicant has a presentation that they're gonna want to go over. I can also bring back up some of the discussion points, if that will assist later on the commission in their discussion this evening. But before the applicant gives his presentation, is there any questions that commission has of staff this evening, before that happens? Alright, so, Armon, do you want to go ahead and...
Am I doing this?
Yes, you can definitely.
Hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners, my name is Armon Bakili, and I am, I purchased this property back in October 2019, and I'm currently residing there, and I'm a resident. This, let me see if I can, 34456 Villa Gomez. There is a deep 14-foot area in the back of the property, and my neighbors are extremely happy and excited that we're trying to resolve this problem for them. And they, my neighbor to the right has already put out a fire, because the wire, electrical wire is going right across the property, with his hose, put out the fire twice, according to him. And there is a flood hazard, there is a fire hazard, and then the land is practically useless. By resolving the water issue, I think, the drainage issue, this is the existing property and the pad on, on that property. This is what we're proposing to be built compared to the neighbor's house. It's all gonna be the same. It's at 22 feet high, which is, normal height allowed for our area is 24 feet. So we're actually two, almost two feet below the required elevation. And the one to the left would be the single-family, and the one to the right will be the duplex. Here's the back side of the existing property. Here's the hole that I was talking about. And I have already, this was filled with trees and vegetation, and I had it cut out because of my neighbor's comments. But the, everything, all the shrubs and vegetation is growing back, and they're going really high, especially some bamboo on that side. So, um... This, this is my neighbor's property that put out the fire twice in the past 10, 15 years. And, uh... Well, I'm very excited about it, and my neighbors are extremely excited and ecstatic about trying to resolve this, they call it city issue. And getting the, and making the neighborhood much nicer, much higher class, and increase the value of the properties all over the area. Because that property, existing property, is really not a Dana Point quality of a property. So, from here, I'm gonna stop, and I'm gonna ask Mark to come over and answer any technical questions you might have, or if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than glad to respond.
Yeah, I guess I'd want to hear more about the drainage situation and what you guys are proposing, and maybe Mr. Rab could, could provide that, sort of the history of that back area, and then the proposed, what looks like, what would be an underground vault that would be crossing a couple property lines and some infrastructure. So I'd like to just get a sense of what that is, and what problem you're solving.
Sure. How are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
Madam Chairman and Members of the Commission, my name is Mark Rab. I have Rab Engineering firm that I've had for years and years, and I was asked by Armon's consultant to take a look at the drainage. The drainage on this site is critical. There are two streets above this property that drain all of the properties north, into the curb and gutter, down the curb and gutter, around the corner, and into catch basins on Villa San Juan. Villa San Juan is the street just north of Villa Gomez. The two catch basins that collect the water, drain down through a side yard neighbor to the north and west, and it is in an easement that's been there for years. And that water, that takes public water, comes out and drains into this hole, which is 10 to 14 feet deep. There are no easements on Armon's property for this, to allow it. The water's been running there for years. So what, what he has agreed to do is to address the water issue by constructing an underground vault that doesn't cross any property lines, that the individual property line that exists today will be eliminated with a lot merger. So it will be one parcel, and the vault will be on one side of, or I'm sorry, will be across the old property line, but in the entire new lot. That water will fill up the vault, and as it fills, there'll be a pipe that exits, runs to Villa Gomez underground, and connects with an existing storm drain system to the, kind of to the east on Villa Gomez. Yes. Because of the water quality issues that we all face today, the bottom of the vault will have gravel and infiltrate the water as best it can. But there will be times that the water will be faster than it can infiltrate. And as the water fills in the vault, it will then overflow into this exit pipe. And the exit pipe will go down and into the storm drain system. What that does is it eliminates the neighbor's flooding issue, Armon's flooding issue. There are four properties, I believe, around the site, maybe five, that drain directly to his property now. That can continue, we've allowed for that, provided for the underground accumulation of the water and out. And then I heard tonight that there were fire issues in the past, that the growth in the area touches some wires, and there were some issues with fire. I would say the drainage is the key component, and I was brought on to address that. So I'm here to actually answer any questions you might have about the drainage, or about the grading of the site itself.
I'm good, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Sure.
Commissioner McCann, any questions?
How did you know? Um, I have a number of questions, and I'm not sure who the best person to answer them is. I'm looking at your plan, and I'm understanding that the lot is 130 feet deep, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So if that's true, according to this plan, it looks like the lot goes just about to the middle of the underground storage vault, which would imply that half of it is on someone else's property. Is that accurate or inaccurate?
Were there agreements made with the adjacent property owners?
Sir, if you can come to the microphone, please, and state your name. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Mike Alby, I'm with GNA Consulting Suburban Engineer, Armon's friend, consulting him on this development. As you all aware of it by now, the back of this lot, which all the drainage from the upstream comes to this hole, many years ago, there was, when the other two property in the back, they were, they were trying to approach the city and build their homes, the city asked them to, to sign the easement agreement for the drainage purposes only. And the language in that easement, it says whoever comes first among these three lots, with two lots of him and two lots in the back, actually four lots, whoever comes first is allowed to go to the other lots and do whatever is necessary to clean up the mess by, with this drainage system. And that's clearly says on the easement agreement, and everybody signed it. So, yes, part of the vault, which is basically is gonna capture our 100 years of a queue, the maximum queue, basically what we have analyzing it right now, it comes through that, so the vault has to be big enough to replace the hole that exists right now. And as I said, as he said before, this vault is basically is a bottomless, with the gravel, basically, so, like, previous time, it's gonna be draining, infiltrate to this underground water system, and the overflow comes to the street and goes to the couple of catch basin, 80 feet, I mean 80 feet away from south, west of Armon's house. So there is an easement agreement for the, the structure to be as part of it, to go inside of the other property as well.
Okay, thank you. You hit, sounds like you hit on some of my other questions, but I'm gonna re-ask them in a specific way. So, has a hydraulic analysis, or hydrology analysis been done?
Yes.
To look at the storage volume required?
Preliminary, we have done that, Mark has done that. And the size of the vault is actually is much bigger than what we needed for the 100-year queue, 100-year runoff.
Okay, 100-year storm event is what you guys analyzed?
Exactly.
Is the, is the, um, so you're connecting to an existing storm system out on Villa Gomez? Was that, first of all, did you get the invert elevation of that pipe where you're going to?
Yes, we did. There is a, there is a manhole, again, 80 feet to the east of his property, and that manhole has a 30-inch diameter RCP, reinforced concrete pipe, connected to. And there are two catch basin on each side. That catch basin is located on the low point of his street, basically. And which, with this system, majority of the water is gonna infiltrate to the ground. But as Mark said, the overflow runs through his property, comes out through the curb face, and goes to those two catch basin on 80 feet away from the east property.
Okay, so the invert, into the, the, it, the, the outlet pipe that you guys have designed does not fully drain the hole, it's not down at the bottom of the basin?
No, no, no.
It's up a number of feet? So when it drains, it'll leave, let's say, I'm gonna make up a number, four feet of water in there, that over time will infiltrate down into the ground. Is that accurate?
That's accurate.
Okay. So those are all my questions, thank you.
Commissioner Donor, any questions?
I was looking at the 100-year flood capacity, and the hillside condition, is that qualify as a, as a 20%?
So, again, I just want to highlight that this, in terms of plan for the addressing the drainage, has not been reviewed nor approved by Public Works. And again, have, they have made it extremely clear that this is not the only way in which the drainage can be addressed on this site. And again, the focus really this evening had to do with the variance regarding the fill of the 10 to 14 feet, and measuring building height from there. Now, directly to Commissioner Donor's question, the site does qualify potentially for the hillside development, as if you look at from the north-south, so from, in essence, the lot that's noted as 31, going down to 30, that slope does meet the requirement there to meet the hillside requirement, so they would potentially be able to allow use of that code section for both the single-family residence and the duplex in designing this. And it's important to note that the fill in this design is not the only one, and a drainage option could potentially be developed without the fill or the vault option. Because I did verify that component with Public Works earlier.
The, the section 9.05110A3, it says the height of proposed structure cannot be measured from any point higher than 30 inches above existing grade. And, and I guess that's, um... This would be an exception to that?
Yes, this, that's exactly what, in terms of what they're requesting the variance of, is that they want to start measuring the height, in essence, from the top of the new pad, which they're creating by adding 10 to 14 feet of fill. You are exactly correct.
Okay, so, nothing has been looked at from the ability to, to put a foundation on top of 40, 14-foot of fill?
No, that, the necessary information has not been provided. We have not received a geotechnical study or report on this proposed project.
Correction, we have submitted, but Public Works has not looked at it.
Okay, and with three-story building, would have an FAR of .75 as the maximum? Are we, where, what do we have here?
I don't have an FAR necessarily for this, because for a typical development of a single-family to duplex, it's really set up, if you were to look at the RD14 development standards, it's a lot coverage requirement, and then height, we don't really have a floor-to-air ratio, unless you utilize the thirds, the hillside condition. So I don't have a number, and like I said, that hasn't been fully vetted, so I don't know how far off they would be.
Okay. And the outdoor space, is that the, it says 20%, they've met that requirement? Is that by the balconies?
I'm assuming the 20% you're talking about has to do with their landscape, or associated with the private?
Private, private outdoor space?
Yes, balconies would be associated with that. Again, with the verification of all development standards, balconies and things of that nature would qual, would qualify for the required private outdoor space.
Okay, and providing, I didn't see what visitor parking would be for that size of complex?
It would be required to have at least one visitor parking space that is not shown. Again, as noted, there is a number of issues that would still have to be addressed or reviewed to be compliant with all applicable development standards. But again, just with the focus on that, the variance for the height, we wanted to bring that forward, as that's a critical design point for the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Murphy, any questions?
This may be off-point a little bit, but, as the builders know, there's a elementary school there, at the end of the, at the end, and it's like, there's four duplexes, and then there's this particular location. And it's, there are some concerns that have come back about the fact that it's pretty open back there in the back of that project. And it doesn't, and there are some concerns from individuals in the neighborhood, and also from the school, about the safety issues. I know we're in the middle of summer, but this is when, well, as we all know, when the neighborhood gets involved, and it's very dear, near to their hearts, like their children, they have a lot of questions. So have you received any kind of feedback?
So at this time, because this is a new business item, in terms of preliminary review, no public outreach has been done by the city. Perhaps Armon or Mike or Mark can speak if the applicant has done any outreach. It sounds like, based on Armon's comments earlier, that they had had some communication with some of the adjacent neighbors. But again, until we have a formal application and something is brought back before the Planning Commission, we would not necessarily do, we won't do a full public hearing, notification.
Thank you.
Is that your only question? Okay. So my question has to do with your 10 to 14 feet fill in the back. So in looking at the photographs that you guys provided of your neighbors, it looks like that they have existing retaining walls. So when we do that 12 to 14 feet, how does that impact with the adjacent properties, their existing retaining walls, and then the property due behind this house?
The properties to the north are much easier to discuss, because they are higher than we are. And the ground, as you can see from this plan, although it's hard to see from this distance... And the ground, as you can see from this plan, although it's hard to see from this distance, does slope down to the hole. The adjacent neighbor to the east has a retaining wall. But that fill, the differential between his property and what will be the finish of this property will be very close to each other. The retaining wall was constructed to kind of hold back whatever fill, as you can see, the top of his wall there will be close to the grade of this site. And so the retaining wall will essentially disappear. Does that make sense?
So does it?
Improve it?
Get removed or does it just stay there?
It would all be, nobody knows how that wall was built and what the structural components are.
Right, and that's kind of the question about how that affects because they have existing walls. So if they need to be modified, it's on their property and not yours. So is there another one that would go back to back possibly?
It would either go back to back if the city allows that sort of thing, depending on the city. Some do, some don't. If it wasn't allowed, then the wall would be taken down and a new wall would be constructed solely individually.
But at that point in time, I guess it would be all hidden. So it'd be more of a shoring type wall than a retaining wall. So we wouldn't need any variance for retaining wall heights.
We haven't gotten that in-depth, but having done a lot of these types of walls and shoring and double walls up against each other in the strands, you're exactly right. It's probably gonna, most likely end up being a shoring type of design with it stepping back up to this with necessary drainage put down there and then filled back in.
I have one other quick question, Sean. What, so when you said that there's other ways to do this, or somebody said there's another way to do this, is it thought that they would then step down the house and the home would be, you know, effectively put down in the hole?
There is an option, yes, that they could go down to the pad level down there, yes, and then have the up. And like we had, was it on Kyla Primavera, right? Where you almost just look at right off the driveway, you pull right out the street into a garage, have some living space there and step down. Even looking at the example of, if you look on page ten of your staff report, if they were able to utilize the hillside, they might even get some additional living space, how they could, how it would be potentially laid out. I don't know in terms of the extent, but the vision in which you're expressing, yes, it would at minimum be that.
Okay, and then help me understand the difference between, what makes something a basement? If it was defined as a basement?
So there is an exact definition within the zoning code for a basement. And in short, it has to do with that there is no exterior visual of it being there, short of about, they can exceed more than, closer than six feet in terms of opening for ventilation. But everything else, I think you cannot have more than four feet above the grade. So there's a number of limitations, both in terms of exposure of that area and also air ventilation points that are limiting, that would, if you meet, you then meet the definition of a basement and does not count as a story.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner McCann?
Thank you. Couple more questions. Regarding that side retaining wall, I was assuming that dirt would just get backfilled up against it and it effectively ceases to retain. Is that what's being envisioned? Okay. And just to confirm, right now this hole is just a sump. There is no outlet, correct?
There is no outlet.
It just fills up until finally it tops over the sidewalk and goes out into the street?
Exactly.
Okay. And then lastly, so you guys are proposing a connection to this existing storm drain system. Have there been any calcs run to see if it can handle this additional Q?
We haven't got to that much detail, but we know the downstream pipe is already under pressure. So that's why we are trying to have a bottomless basin. So majority of the water just infiltrate to the ground as it does right now. If I may, I go back to the basement. Please recall, I mean, please note this, that right now there's a big hole. If you go underneath and put a basin in this lot, that means the water coming from twenty-four acres of drainage, tributary drainage area, where that water is gonna go. So we need to put that basin underneath to gather all this water coming from the upstream. And then let it go to the, infiltrate to the street, to the ground. And the overflow, whatever it is, that pipe is gonna carry the rest of it to to the existing pipe, the thirty-inch pipe I was talking about. But time of concentration, based on my experience, we have not done the actual calculation, but I have forty years of experience in this, as a civil engineer. By the time the water comes from upstream goes to this hole, the pipe that is downstream, the thirty-inch pipe, which is under pressure as we speak, majority of water is already gone. By the time our water, the ice storm water from upstream comes, gets to that manhole or to those two catch basin, that pipe is not under pressure anymore. So it can accept our water. We talk about a lot of the, about the existing elevation and proposed elevation. Listen, the proposed elevation is gonna be the same as every other neighborhood, I mean neighbors. And what we are trying to do, there is not that much fill. Actually, when we built this huge box underneath, there's a little bit fill around it. So it's gonna be completely, the finished surface is gonna be one foot above the back of the sidewalk, which is normal. Which is the last, basically, the pad, the finished floor elevation has to be one foot above the, above the back of the sidewalk.
Okay, thank you. I have no other questions.
So can I ask two questions about the containment then? So you're gonna have a pipe in there that's gonna discharge and it's, I'm assuming it's gonna dissipate the water, what you were talking about? So you'll have whatever holes drilled in, so it would slowly go into the main system and not just go in there as it does? And then I'm assuming that as part of your geotech, you've done a, a percolation test, thank you?
Yes, we have done that.
To figure out how quickly it will go into and then what your volume will be?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. So I'm assuming that will conclude this item then?
Madam Chair, I'd like to provide the applicant with some feedback.
Oh, sorry. Please.
Okay, so I've gone through your plans. Thank you for coming in and putting this in front of us. Hopefully it will help you guys as you try to work through all these issues. Couple thoughts. You know, in looking at your architectural design, the one thing I would suggest relative to your building placement is that your windows get lined up, are moved, so they're not directly lined up, especially in that tighter passageway in between the two buildings, which would be, you know, where the kitchen on building number two is, looking into hallway and a kitchen. But there's, one, two, there's three windows that are aligned straight up. I would just suggest taking a look at alternating those and creating some privacy. You know, when I look at this, if you block out all the stuff we heard tonight and just look at the map, this looks like a lot, you know, with a line down the middle, like any other lot in the neighborhood. The big issue seems to be the hole in the backyard that, you know, we don't have a lot of history on, but it sounds sort of like a community drainage pit that's just never been dealt with. And this is the last lot on the block. So what I would say is, you know, I don't have any major concerns with your proposal in regard to that other than making sure that there's a, you know, an engineering sign-off, obviously, and working closely with the city. We don't have the authority to, I don't believe we have the authority to take a position on drainage facilities. But this is not a situation that is seen on most blocks. And there's a few of these around town where there's the base of the hill. And I don't even know how these things get created. But that being said, I don't, you know, in some cases, I think fill makes sense. And if we try to use this one-size-fits-all mentality, it makes things really difficult on these orphan lots like this one. And I look at the picture of the neighbor, he's got a four to five-foot retaining wall. So he's up above the existing lot. And then it looks like everything sort of falls off to the other side. So it doesn't appear that adding or flattening out this lot will be detrimental to the neighbors. That being said, you know, one thing I would suggest is that you make sure that you talk to all your neighbors, especially the ones that are gonna get noticed if you end up moving forward. Cause the word variance is a bad word in, you know, pretty much all of town. And if they understand what you're doing, it may make sense to them and they may be supportive. And that'll be helpful for you guys. One other thought here. The only other thought I had is when I was looking at this, you've got, you've got three curb cuts. And I would suggest just looking at the idea of a wider, and maybe this, some staff would have to help them with, a wider entry drive, maybe down the center, that peels off to each garage on the sides and then down the center. Or trying to remove one of those curb cuts. Cause every curb cut, we lose parking on that street and parking on this area is gonna be one of your big concerns that are gonna probably come up from the neighbors. So it, you know, designing it so they're maximizing the curb space would be beneficial to the neighbors and obviously to you guys. So other than that, I don't think I had any other comments. Yeah, that's about it. So, thank you.
Does anybody else want to provide any feedback? Commissioner McCann?
First of all, I'd echo what Commissioner Nelson said. And particularly in regards to the, you know, the driveways and the curb cuts. If you look at the sketch, it's just all concrete and just all curb cut. So, but anyway, I think this is a great project. I mean, it looks like it solves a big ugly issue drainage-wise. And this is exactly what variances should be for. So I'll be supportive of this project. It's a bummer to me that, you know, the, basically, all the financial burden of solving this problem falls on you. And yet, you know, it's gonna benefit a lot of other people. I would, so with that being said though, I would say that, and the reason I ask so many drainage and hydrology questions is because, you know, my being supportive of the variance is dependent upon you not creating a hydraulic or hydrology problem that we don't have now. So, you know, I'd love to see, you know, not that I want to personally review them, but that there's real hydrology calcs done to make sure that we don't overwhelm the existing system. You talked about it being under pressure already. And the time of concentration issue makes sense to me. But I wanna make sure that if we, if I'm supportive of it, assuming that we don't create other problems and that, you know, the volume is addressed as you suggest. I can't imagine that the volume of the vault is as high as the volume of the open pit. So it seems like we're shrinking the volume. But yet there'll be an outlet. So anyway, my support would be dependent on making sure that there are no complications.
I have no other comments. I feel the same way. Thanks.
Commissioner Murphy? And I don't have any further to add beyond what Commissioners Nelson and McCann have already provided. So with that, I believe I can close this item for this evening. Thank you. We look forward to seeing it coming back to us. Okay, do we have any staff reports this evening?
Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Commissioner comments? No Commissioner comments? So we will adjourn until our next meeting.